Perfect. Hey, everyone, this is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb County Public Affairs, letting you know we are streaming live to Facebook right now. For anyone watching on Facebook, we have a public hearing coming up in just a couple of minutes here regarding business license fees. That'll be from 4:30 to 5:00. At 5 o'clock, we will have a pre-commission meeting. And then at 6 o'clock will be our full commission meeting. You can look in the description of this video to find a link to the agenda for this meeting if you'd like more information on the agenda. And if you know people who don't have Facebook but would like to watch this meeting, they can do so on our website, that is www.maconbib.us. Again, anyone without Facebook can watch these meetings at maconbib.us. We are just now working on getting that stream on the website and we'll be getting started here in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. Hey, everyone, this is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb County Public Affairs. Again, just testing the sound for the live stream that is on our website, maconbib.us. If you're watching on Facebook and you know people who do not use Facebook, they can watch this meeting. Again, that's on our website, maconbib.us. We're getting started here with a public hearing regarding business license fees, followed by our pre-commission meeting and then our full commission meeting. Thanks for bearing with us. We'll be started here in just a few minutes. It's working. I just tested it. All right. Okay. Mr. Mayor, we are streaming live on both places, so we're good to go whenever you are.
Excellent. Thank you, Rachel. Let me call to order this public hearing on the ordinance to provide a one-time safe haven period for late payment of business license fees. I want to say thank you to the commissioners who have tuned in a little bit early on this call to be sure that we had a quorum for this public hearing. I understand we've got Commissioner Wynn, Commissioner Schlesinger, Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Allen, and Commissioner Watkins all on the line with us. And I'm here so that that's six and that constitutes a quorum. In addition, we've got Mayor-elect and one or two of the commissioners-elect in attendance with us as well. I think it would be wise for us and for those that have tuned in now to this public hearing to see exactly why we need this public hearing and what it's about. It is my understanding that anytime you make a change to existing business license fee ordinances, you have to have this public hearing. And I'll call on our first assistant county attorney, Michael McNeil, to confirm that that is the case and then to walk us through this proposed ordinance. Michael?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, that's correct. There's a provision in state law and it's copied in the ordinance which I'm showing on the screen now. It says, "After April 11th of 1995, any local government shall conduct at least one public hearing before adopting any ordinance or resolution relating to the occupation tax." As I've mentioned to this commission before, occupation tax and business license are used synonymously in our code. And that's what this relates to. And so we're required to have at least one public hearing before the final vote. And so that's what we're doing right now. The way that this is written, we passed a similar measure, I want to say in January of this year, to provide for people that had delinquencies or lack of notice about renewal of their business license fees. And this does a similar, extends a similar grace while we transition our business license fees from our Business Development Services Department over to the Tax Commissioners Department, which they'll be taking over January 1st. And so the whereas provisions recite the provisions of Georgia law that allows us to do this. Scrolling down to the substantive provisions, this says that there is hereby declared to be a one-time business license safe haven term which shall commence upon the effective date of this ordinance, which is as soon as it's signed into law, and shall expire on April 1st, 2021. During this term, any business which is delinquent in the payment of any occupation tax owed to Macon shall have the option to file the appropriate returns and pay in full all unpaid taxes previously levied for calendar year 2021 and any prior calendar years. If the business files their tax returns, they pay all unpaid occupation taxes for all prior tax years if they're delinquent, then they're relieved and excused from paying any penalties or interest whatsoever on the occupation taxes. So all they pay is the base amount that they would have owed anyway if they had paid on time in the first instance. They shall be considered to be at such time in good standing with regard to the Macon Bibb County occupation taxes. Nothing in this ordinance affects the base amount of the occupation taxes, which is there's an administrative fee and a per-employee fee. And that's the base amount that is still going to be owed even if this is adopted. There's no partial waiver or other excusal of penalty or interest. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. And so if they can pay all of their delinquency, then they'll be completely forgiven of fees and interest. If they only want to pay part of it, then they will not. They'll have to pay all of their fees and interest in full. The administration is hereby requested to mail copies of this ordinance to all known businesses current, holding current or delinquent business licenses so far as can be determined. And as I said, the effective date is upon adoption into law. Under our code, business licenses cannot start to be renewed until January 1st. And so even if this is adopted tonight, that'll give us time to get the notices mailed out to as many people as we can. And then they'll have from January 1st to April 1st to take advantage of this offer, assuming it passes. Mr. Mayor, I think that's a complete walkthrough of the law. I'll be glad to answer any other questions that you or the commission have.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Any commissioner have a question of Michael about the ordinance, the language, the intent, et cetera, and what it does, what it doesn't do? Excellent. If there is any member of the public that has signed on and is watching us and wishes to ask a question, I'll ask Rachel or Sarah to give a call-in number so that maybe they can call in if they want to do that with a question or a comment about it. Rachel?
Do you have a question regarding that? The call-out number we give out also requires the ID and password for this meeting. And I didn't know if that is something you wanted to do. We can do that? It would... Yeah, it would allow anyone to join. Like the same password y'all use to log into the meeting, I would have to give that out if someone were going to call in.
What if we used a different number like the clerk's number? Maybe she doesn't want to give that out.
Just to be perfectly frank, we could have set that up earlier. I didn't realize that you wanted to do that. Otherwise, I would have set it up that way. So if we want to use someone's phone specifically and could put them on speaker...
How about this? Can they email in a question or comment? Can they email that? And if so, how would they email in a question or comment?
Dr. Moffett has messaged that it's okay to use his number, actually. He sent that to everyone, so if you'd like, I can give that out.
Do that, but give us an email address as well, Rachel, please.
All right. Janice, you have...
You can email us at commission@maconbib.us.
So that's commission@maconbib.us if anyone listening would like to send those in. Dr. Moffett has also given his number for anyone who would like to call into this meeting to talk about the business license fees, 478-957-0556. Again, that is 478-957-0556. So if anyone has any comments and they would call in, that way we can get them onto the meeting through those routes.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wynn? Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I did have a question when Michael was talking about this earlier. We had done something similar to this back in January, I believe, of this year. Is that correct or was it sometime last year where we gave... It was very similar to what we're doing now. I wonder what happened with that?
If I may?
Yes, please.
We saw about an increase from January of June of this year of about $93,000 of increase in total business, general business license revenue. Unfortunately, the question that was asked was, "How much did we wind up waiving?" Because the late fees and penalties are an add-on. When we don't add them on, there's nothing to collect there as far as the data. The reason why we asked for this is because it's going to the Tax Commissioner and he's going to be sending a letter to every business in our system since consolidation. And so this renewal notice will go out in about, would probably go out next week once we finalize what we're going to do here tonight. And for, we know that there's going to be some confusion. If someone has not had a license over the last two years, if they want to come in and get their current license renewed, then we noticed that we have, citizens have said, "Well, I never got my renewal and therefore I don't think I need to pay this late fee," which is what kind of prompted paying it and asking for this last year to kind of reduce some of that confusion, to just go ahead and let them pay the years. So they will pay for the subsequent years, but all thing we're asking you to do is just waive any late fee penalties with that. But to answer your question, we saw an increase of about $93,000 of business licenses over the same time period from year 2019 as compared to year 2020.
So if the, I know that the Tax Commissioner's office is taking over as of January. So we should be able to clear this up so they're now going to get their notices properly and not have this issue. Is that correct?
That is the goal. Yes, ma'am.
But there will be no penalty. There'll be no penalty even if they pay this time, right?
Yes, ma'am. Just until April 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioner have a question of Michael or Dr. Moffett?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jones, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Good. Go ahead.
Just try to help answer the question. Yes, we did have that last year for Commissioner Wynn. And we got some responses as Dr. Moffett indicated. But we, this came up because of talking to businesses. One who approached me and told me of two or three others that one had an ongoing conversation with that department and they were told to hold up. The commission is working on something, which was a year ago, and we passed it. And they said they would get back to them and they never did. So this business owner, being an honest citizen, said, "You know, I haven't paid it for two or three or four years and I want to do what's right." So in conference with Dr. Moffett and I guess Wade McCord, Commissioner McCord, they said, "Well, let's do it again and then hopefully we'll be on track and be straightened out beginning next year when Commissioner McCord takes over the billing." But right now, we still have a lot of people who haven't paid, who didn't get the notice. So this is being done again to bring in dollars that we would otherwise not get and waive the penalty because Macon Bibb County is partly to blame for some of these people not paying.
Let's just hope we'll be on track now. We won't have this problem in the future.
Amen. Amen. And I think that's all what we're trying to do. And I'm really looking forward to information next year about renewal of business licenses and other alcohol licenses that the Tax Commissioner has agreed to take over for us and send out the bill. So I think that's an excellent point. Are you muted?
We have received one comment. Does the Tax Commissioner want us to do this?
Yes.
Can I get you to elaborate on it? That was pretty conclusive, but I mean...
Well, he was in the committee.
I'm stalling for time here, too.
He was in a committee meeting on last week and he's in approval of doing this. He feels it'll cut down on some of the confusion as he sent out these renewal notices and people start coming in in January doing this license renewal because the data is kind of not complete for him to go back and verify. Someone had a license in 2015, didn't have one in 2016, probably had one in 2017. He just feels like this will help his process where he can just charge them for the subsequent year and move forward.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
I've been down to the Tax Commissioner's office and he's got the new setup with the new windows for the, I believe it's the alcohol licenses. And it was already, two months ago when I went down there, it was already working very smoothly. So I anticipate this, and the Tax Commissioner is going to do a good job. They've got some good people on board there and I think it's going to be very beneficial to the city.
I don't disagree with that at all, Commissioner Wynn. And I will say one other thing, giving credit where credit is due. It was the former Bibb County Commission that decided it would be a good idea to buy the bank building at the corner of Third Street and Walnut Street and make that the Tax Commissioner's office. And they did that. I don't know, Commissioner Allen, if you were on the commission when they did that or not, but it has certainly worked out well. And I think everybody is pleased with the accessibility of the Tax Commissioner's office. And now he's kind of taken that to the next level by putting renewals online and doing more and more things online. So I think it's worked out real well. A real success story for Macon Bibb.
You're exactly right, Mayor. That's something that we did back then and it just came together. Everything's fine. I think this is going to be great. I really do.
I do, too. Oh, I do, too. My information, Michael, is that we're supposed to have 20 minutes after the beginning time to have a public hearing. Is that right? Are you supposed to have 20 minutes?
I'm not familiar with a time requirement.
Maybe I've just always heard that, that you have to wait at least 20 minutes for people to sign in and call in or this, that, or the other.
Did we advertise a time for...
We just advertised the beginning time. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. I know the Tax Commissioner is going to send out the letters, as Dr. Moffett mentioned. I hope we will put something on the website. Chris will put something on there that, so we can give fully, full notice to the public, local business owners so they, because I know they want to do the right thing and pay what they're supposed to pay. So we just need to have, we need to make sure they are fully informed from any angle.
I think that would be, I think that would be an excellent thing for us to do, assuming that this passes tonight, which I anticipate that it will, then we can put out a press release on it and make sure that people are aware of where they're supposed to pay their business licenses and win and this safe harbor provision that'll allow them, even if they didn't get it last year, to get it this year. And that, there is one other thing, too. Michael, maybe you can check on this. I know that the Georgia Municipal Association and the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia were trying to work with the Department of Revenue so that the Department of Revenue could share with cities and counties the list of businesses that were remitting sales tax because that would be a pretty good indication that they were in business if they're remitting sales tax. And that would be a good way for us to check and see if somebody's remitting sales tax but does not have a business license, then why don't they have a business license? And give us a way to check up on them. Would you try to check and see what the status of that is? Or was?
I'll be glad to call them, Mr. Mayor. Do you know if that's a report that GMA and ACCG have already done or I can call GDR directly?
Let's start with just calling GMA and/or ACCG because I know that they were instrumental and I know they got part of it done and I can't remember which part. Maybe that the Department of Revenue was willing to accept a list of people that had business licenses so they could check their records to be sure that they were remitting sales taxes. But I'm not sure we got the other part of that for us to get the list of people remitting sales taxes so we could check them to see if they had a business license.
Yes, sir.
That would be something good for us to coordinate if we could. All right. Any other questions, comments? Nobody else has called in or emailed a message in, have they, Janice? Okay. And no other commissioner has a question or comment? Then without objection, I think what I'll do is adjourn the public hearing at this time and just let everybody stand at ease, take a comfort break, and then come right back at 5 o'clock and we'll begin the pre-commission meeting as scheduled at 5:00. Is there objection to doing that? If not, the public hearing is adjourned. And stand at ease, leave your computer running. You don't need to sign off or anything else. And we'll begin the pre-commission meeting promptly at 5:00. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey, everyone, this is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb County Public Affairs. We're about five minutes away from beginning our 5 o'clock pre-commission meeting. I would like to ask, someone has entered the meeting under the name 14783. If you just entered this meeting and your device might be named 14783...
Rachel? It's Duke.
It is Duke Grover. Thank you, Mr. Grover. I couldn't see you because we've got that graphic up.
Right.
And wanted to make sure we know who's here. It's all good. I will change your name right now.
Thank you. I didn't know how to do it, so I appreciate it.
Okay, so we have learned from Assistant County Attorney, Michael here, said not to let you in, so... It's a battle of the county attorneys. Battle Royale. All right. And to anyone still watching, we are still live streaming. We like to have fun on occasion. We are live streaming on Facebook at facebook.com/maconbibcounty. If you are watching this meeting on Facebook and you know people who don't use Facebook but would like to watch, they can do so on our website, www.maconbib.us. The meeting is also streaming there. We'll be getting started here with our pre-commission meeting in just a few minutes. Thank you.
Can I get Santa to join us?
Yes, Santa Claus is actually permitted in this meeting as well. Thank you, Commissioner Wynn, for bringing our special guest. Only if he brings us gifts and not coal.
Later on, we will get gifts. Okay. Thank you.
I thought it was only you were nice. Some of us have been naughty.
Oh, well, I have to check on that now. Santa will have to check on that, okay?
Okay. All right.
You look very festive with that red.
I saw Duke on here, so we invited the Grinch.
I'm the Grinch.
He's the Grinch and I'm the Santa.
That's right. Welcome back, Duke. Glad to see you, man.
Thank you, brother.
I thought Spencer was the Grinch.
Oh, that is true. Spencer is the Grinch. He's not on the call yet, so we can keep talking about it.
Oh, I'm here.
He's there, I saw him.
I'm here. And I'm allowing Duke on the call because he's still socially distanced in his own office. I'm at my home office right now.
How you feeling?
I feel 1,000% better. I appreciate it.
Yeah, when, I don't know if you knew this, but I had it, too.
Oh, when did you have it?
I'm just about two weeks ago. And getting through the end of it, I mean, I'm past the, what do you call it, the quarantine period just recently and still trying to get strength back. Unbelievable.
Yeah, no, the fatigue is out of this world.
Out of this world. Never experienced anything like that in my life. Other than that, I had no real symptoms, just that.
I had some fever, but that subsided last weekend. And it's really just fatigue. I mean, that's the biggest.
Yes, fatigue. And I didn't have any fever, cough, or really anything like that, so anyway. anyway, good to be back.
I'm glad you're doing better.
Yeah, same, same to you.
Just a reminder to everyone in the meeting and everyone watching online, we are still streaming live to Facebook and our website. We are just waiting till the five o'clock hour to roll around to start our pre-commission meeting, followed by full commission at six. We'll be getting started here shortly. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You heard about Wayne Low today passing COVID, didn't you?
I did, I did. Very, very unfortunate. But I, I knew he had been tested as COVID positive and, and transferred to the hospital. But yeah, I was sorry to hear earlier today that he had passed away.
When I was in Houstie County.
We'll have, yeah, we'll, we'll have an announcement from Spencer about that. And I don't mean to be a doomsday spokesperson, but Spencer's report is not going to be like.
No.
Pre-commission sixty?
What is that?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order this pre-commission meeting of the Macon Bibb Commission and start off with this required announcement out of an abundance of caution. The Macon Bibb County Commission meeting, scheduled for Tuesday, December the fifteenth, at five o'clock, will be available to the Macon Bibb County Commissioners by video conference only. The commission chambers will be closed to the public and press in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, the public and press may only access the meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbibb.us or www.facebook.com/maconbibbcounty. So tune in if you would like one of those two ways. And let me say that at the, at the beginning here, we'll have a roll call momentarily to confirm that we've got a quorum of commissioners, because we do have several items of new business to discuss at the pre-commission meeting. In fact, let me go ahead now and see if I can add several items to our agenda that are late arrivals. Number one, in the late arrival category, we need to have an executive session to discuss consultation or to have consultation with the county attorney or other legal counsel to discuss pending or potential litigation settlement claims or administrative proceedings. We need to, we need to do that at the earliest appropriate time in the meeting. So can I get a motion to add an executive session for the stated purpose, please?
Move.
Got motion by Allen, second by Schlesinger, further discussion, all in favor of adding the executive session to our agenda for the pre-commission meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, and that's added. We also have several items of new business that were on the agenda when it was issued. There were three, as I understand it. But now, we've got an ordinance to authorize the appropriation of up to $221,848 from 2020 Center for Tech and Civic Life Election Grant Fund for the purpose of providing additional pay to certain election workers. That is time sensitive, and we need to take up, can I get a motion to add that for discussion on our pre-commission agenda, please?
Move.
By Schlesinger, second by Winn, to add that. All in favor of adding that ordinance for discussion to the pre-commission agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, and then now we've also got another, yes, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an anticipated EMA Performance Grant, Emergency Management Administration Performance Grant, partnership award in the amount of $50,000 with a required local match of $50,000, which will be provided by in-kind services. So the match is in-kind. I want to get a motion to add that for discussion to our pre-commission. It's time sensitive as well.
Move.
By Allen, and second by Schlesinger. Any further discussion about adding that? Hearing none, all in favor of adding that to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The ayes have it, so we'll add that. And finally, we have a, an amendment to the Oatmuggie Mounds to, to the donation of land that was heard in the committee meetings last week, and it was approved to transfer some land behind the sheriff's shooting range and adjacent to it, as well as some lots in town off of the Main Street neighborhood. But the attorney's office discovered an error in the deed descriptions so that we, we need to clarify the deeds and the property to be conveyed so that it's accurate. Want to do that in pre-commission so we can go over it and then substitute it on the floor for the original bill that passed committee. So can I get a motion to add this resolution to convey property, donation of real property to the United States Department of the Interior to be included in the Oatmuggie Mounds to our pre-commission agenda?
Move.
Got a motion by Winn, second by Schlesinger. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adding that item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. So now we've got a full, full meeting with several items of new, new business. So let's get started and, and see what we can do. The first thing that I would like to do is to make an announcement. Well, actually, before I forget it, let me get the clerk to call the roll so that we, so that we'll know when we take official action that we've got a quorum of folks. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? And when she calls your name, please unmute and make an audible response for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Winn?
Here.
Commissioner Schlesinger?
Here.
Commissioner Lucas?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bivens? I thought I saw Commissioner Bivens.
Empty chairs there.
Well, he, he may, he may be right back. I think he's still tuned, tuned in, but we, we won't mark him present right now.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd?
And we're not expecting him to, to dial in tonight.
No, sir. Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Tillman?
Here.
Good. So we've, we've got a, we've got a quorum. Let me make this announcement, then. We do not plan to have a meeting next week. Next week is the twenty-second. It's holiday week. We don't think we have any urgent business that needs attending to. So we are, at this point, going to cancel the meeting for December the twenty-second. Should we, should we have something urgent that does come up, we would then have to call, have a special called meeting at that time. But we do not anticipate having to do that. So right now, this will be the last meeting of the year. If everything goes as we hope, we will not meet on the twenty-second. There will be a special meeting on Wednesday, December the thirtieth, at eleven o'clock a.m. for the inauguration of the new administration. And that's going to be in the city auditorium for social distancing purposes. So that will be the meeting, and the sole item of business at that meeting will be the swearing in of the new mayor and commission. That'll be again Wednesday, December the thirtieth, eleven o'clock a.m. at the city auditorium. And that'll be the only other meeting this year. And you'll be off to a great start next year with a new mayor-elect and new commission. So this may be, hopefully, will be the last meeting of our current administration. With that having been said, we're, we're winding up in a rather dark and dismal time, unfortunately, even though this is the season of light. We've got a lot of holiday activity going on. And the reason for the season, I'm gonna call on Spencer Hawkins. I hope he's on the line here with us now and can give us the latest update on COVID-19 and our response to it. Spencer?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Good, go ahead.
Um, I, I, once again, I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news during this joyful holiday season, but that is what I'm going to do. We are not seeing the numbers go the way that we need them to here in Macon Bibb County as far as COVID cases. Currently, our confirmed cases are at thirty-nine point four daily average. That means every day on average, about thirty-five new people are contracting COVID. The preliminary data that we're going to see, that we're looking at, that goes through December ninth, jumps us up to forty-nine, almost fifty people. So every single day, fifty new people are getting COVID, which is the indication that we are not doing the right thing. The whole of central Georgia is also on the rise. It's not just us. We have seen over the last two weeks, looking at the latest NCHD, North County, sorry, the North Central Health District report for Bibb County, has seen a sixty-five percent increase in newly confirmed COVID-19 cases between the current and the previous two-week period that we track. Sixty-five percent increase. And this is not attributed to any one specific hotspot. It is community-wide. And so I know, Mayor, just want to double check, do you still want me to present at the beginning of the six o'clock, or do you want me to do everything here?
Just do everything here, Spencer. But if you want to, you can tune in, and I will call on you so that you can announce it. But I think everybody at the six o'clock is probably already watching here at five.
That's fine. One of the things I wanted to, to talk about and mention here is that the, 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 the quickness with, at which the cases are rising, we've seen a doubling of our cases in the last two weeks. We've gone from about twenty-four, twenty-five new cases a day to, like I said, almost fifty new cases a day in just under two weeks. So that is a rise that we cannot sustain. We need to wear masks. I understand that the, the vaccines are, are being deployed. We've seen it all on the news. But understand that those vaccines are first going to frontline healthcare workers. They're going to people in nursing homes with, with double comorbidities. They're going to first responders, to EMTs, paramedics, who are on the front lines dealing with this. The everyday Macon Bibb County citizen with everything that we're seeing today cannot expect to see a COVID-19 vaccine until the spring, probably late spring, early summer. So that means for at least the next five or six months, we need to continue to wear masks, socially distance, avoid masked gatherings. We need to continue to wash our hands. What we're telling everybody now is that unless you are in your home with the people that live there, in your car by yourself with the people that you live with, or in an office or a room by yourself, other than those specific scenarios, you should be wearing a mask. Even if you're in a room where you're ten foot between you and the other person, and they don't live with you, you need to wear a mask. It's been shown that wearing a mask is the most effective means that we have to combat this virus. So like I said, unless you're by yourself in a room, in your home, or in a room with only the people that you live with, even if you're socially distanced, you need to be wearing a mask. It is so critically important that we wear a mask everywhere. Commissioners, we will be sending you information about mask wearing, about the holiday season, things like that. Please, please, we need your help in sharing this information with your constituents. You are the direct line. You have the ear of the people that, that elected you. Please get the information and word out to your constituents that wearing a mask is critically important for at least the next three to six months until we can get a majority of the population vaccinated.
Good.
That's all I have, barring any questions.
Any questions? Just, yeah, questions, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Based on what Spencer just said, and the seriousness that I hear from his voice, why have we not issued some type of ordinance on local nightclub gatherings? And even issuance of beer, wine, alcohol licenses and those things? I mean, you don't hear you say all this stuff, but then people just go by their normal routine. There's, we say this stuff, but then there's no recommendation. And so I'm just saying, so what's your recommendation? Why is there no further recommendation on nightclubs?
Right.
And the issuance of licenses?
Mayor Pro Tim, that's an excellent question, and it's a wonderful segue to Michael McNeil and his report on the governor's executive order, which is supposedly, as I understand it, and Michael, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and answer Mayor Pro Tim's question about what, what the governor's order allows and permits as far as businesses to be open and operating.
Hey, but if I may, though, there is a distinct difference between what the governor's order is saying and what Macon Bibb County is regulating or enforcing. So I think, I think that's more to the commissioner's question. Even with the governor's order, what are we doing, if anything, recommending different?
Well, I'm not, and I'm not trying to dodge the bullet. I, I hear you, Commissioner Watkins. And when Michael answers, if he says under the governor's executive order that we can issue some sort of local mask mandate in bars, nightclubs, or whatever like that, that, that will be one of the first items of business for the new administration since if this is our last meeting of the year, we don't have time to do anything about it tonight. But your, your point is well taken. Michael, let me call on you, because this may be something y'all want to take up first part of next year. Well, I ain't trying to dodge a bullet. I'm just telling you the truth. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor.
Help me out here.
Thank you, Mayor. So Governor.
Commissioner was just talking about the last, what we need to do for the next three weeks, though, holidays. I, I, I'm sorry. Apologies, IU.
Spencer just told you what we needed to do.
So how will we implement that? Again, IU, Michael has the floor. Apologies. But come back to me when you're ready.
We will, we will. We'll come back. We've got a lot of other business, but we'll come back. We will, we will. We'll come back. We've got a lot of other business, but we'll come back.
So Governor Kemp has, he gave us an early, he's been on a two-week cycle for these COVID orders, but he gave us the end of December one early. He published it last week, but it takes effect tomorrow, runs through the end of December. And it contains the same provisions. It's 53 pages long. It contains the same provisions, generally speaking, about operation of businesses. Many of these provisions have been in these orders since April or May, when he first started doing these. The, the only change that I've found between this order and the one for the first half of December that expires today, you may recall, last time I told you about some provisions that allowed nurses and pharmacists to administer COVID vaccines. The order that was issued last week had an exception in it that said that they could only administer those vaccines to adults. That provision has been removed from this version of the order. And so now it's written in a way that they can administer it to patients of any age. That's the only difference that I've found between this order and the one for the first two weeks of December. Getting to Mayor Rickards' question about regulations on businesses, there's a term in here, and the term that the governor uses is gathering. And a gathering is defined as more than 50 people that are in the same location in such a way that any two of them are within six feet. So if you've got 51 people and they're all six feet apart, except for two of them are holding hands, that's a gathering. But if you've got all of them at least six feet apart, then it's not. What it says is that businesses are not allowed to have gatherings. And that's, there is a number of exceptions for places like essential industry and things like that. But generally speaking, especially for, if you're not listed as critical infrastructure, then you are required to prohibit gatherings during your hours of operation. That's something that the sheriff and the sheriff's deputies are empowered under this order to enforce. That's something that I believe Spencer's mentioned in previous meetings, that they have the non-emergency hotline, 751, I think it's some, I'm sorry, I forget the number, 751, 7500. The non-emergency line to the 911 center, where if you see one of these gatherings, that's, that's something where you can call it in and they'll go and they can disperse the crowd. But that is a mandatory provision that applies to all businesses that are not considered critical infrastructure. In addition, the mayor mentioned a mask mandate. We, this commission has passed a mask mandate in accordance with the terms of the governor's order. That's in effect and will continue to renew as long as the governor's state of emergency continues to renew. However, you may recall that there's a number of exceptions in that. There's religious exceptions. There's exceptions for people that have health conditions where wearing a mask would interfere with their breathing. And there's provisions that say that private businesses, there's language where they can post a sign opting out of enforcement of that mask mandate on their premises. And that's as far as the governor has let us go, as far as the mask mandate goes. And I've seen a couple of businesses around town that have posted those signs, but for the most part, I haven't seen very many. It's been a very small percentage, just personally speaking. And so that's, go ahead, Spencer.
Okay. And also with regards to special event permits and things like that, Mike and I worked very closely with, you know, Wade McCord, who's issuing special event permits now, as well as Robert Walker and Michael Glisten, who does a lot of the other special event permits. And we've written, it's about a two-page addendum to the special events permit requests that lists out all of the COVID restrictions, that talks about what is a gathering, whether it's 51 or more, 50 or less, and what you have to do to stay in line. And so anyone who is requesting a special event permit has to agree to those terms. And just like Michael said, if they violate those, then it's up to the sheriff's office. The reports would have to go to the sheriff's office for their enforcement.
Thank you, Spencer. Michael, anything else?
I, I think that sums it up, Mr. Mayor.
I, 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 I hope that at least tells commissioners and commissioners-elect and mayor-elect kind of where we are with this. And if they want to take additional measures, they can. But as you point out, Commissioner Watkins, it's going to be after the first of the year. And what do you do between now and then? Well, that, that would be just adhere voluntarily to Spencer's advice. Stay out of mass gatherings if you can, social distance and wear masks, wash your hands, and all of the protocol that the CDC is recommending. Unless there's some objection.
I got asked for the floor once Michael.
You did not said I'd come back to you. So Commissioner Watkins, let me, let me recognize you at this point. And then if Mayor Pro Tim got something else, we'll go to him. But times of the essence, sir.
I understand, and thank you for the time. I guess what I'm, I understand what the CDC and the regulations are. And I guess I don't have a clear understanding exactly of how that applies to what we are actually implementing currently. I, I know we paid for a lot of teleworking equipment for staff. But I see a lot of people seems to be still working from the offices. So, and I know a few months ago, we implemented some type of tiered system. When cases were at 15 per day, this is what we did. When cases were at 20 per day, this is what we did, 50 and so forth. So it seems as though we're rising again. And I think I remember 50 being one of those triggers. So as a matter of just internally, are we going back to teleworking? What's happening with permits? All of those questions, like what city services are changing or staying the same? I guess that's kind of what I'm asking, when we're asking what's changing. Because I guess just starting with that concept of the 50 being the trigger for going from tier two to tier three, if you could answer that for me. That may provide me some clarity of where we're at.
Dr. Moffett? Do you want to chime in at this point on that?
Well, the short answer is we're monitoring the situation. We know we are coming up on the holiday season in the next couple of weeks. We have had this conversation at least three or four times in the last week as we do have a workforce that is either having employees test positive or having employees exposed to positive cases. You've seen your emails. We actually closed some rec centers in the last couple of weeks. I've asked Spencer to research some policies from some other similar-like-sized governments of what they're doing. So we can look at what are some other scenarios we could implement. But as of right now, we are still working on, in our normal work schedule. But I have told department heads to be very diligent, to be very stern in how we work with the employees, that if they're sick, to go get a test, to social distance as much as we can at work. And so we probably, and I said, I said it's going to be a short answer, but the long is we're just taking it on a case-by-case basis.
So I guess if I'm just looking at background, it seems as though a lot of you were at City Hall. Is, we're not social distancing in the offices that work at City, I mean, not social distancing, but there's no telecommuni, telecommunication happening there. Y'all all showing up to work every day, and I guess that's not slated to change? For, is that true for business licenses and every place else in the county? And I do notice, it seems, like you say, I see emails on a case-by-case basis. Seems to be an outbreak happens at X place, and then we'll shut it down reactively. But y'all are not considering, or I would like for you to consider some type of proactive measures? I know we bought a lot of equipment for that purpose.
Your request is duly noted, but I will just respond as saying that the majority of our jobs are citizen-based, and they cannot work from home. We have citizens that come into offices. They expect us to be here. So we are trying to manage it as best as we can. We're trying to social distance, follow all CDC guidelines with safety. We have all PPE. We have a stockpile of PPE. So every office has, you know, has that, that resource at hand. But you are correct, and we are monitoring it daily. And if we get to a point where we need to make some changes, we will come to you very quickly with recommendations.
I guess what I'm concerned about is early when COVID started, you had trigger points, and you had recommendations based upon those trigger points. And it seems as though, I don't know, we formally approved it, but you had approval from the commission. At what point did we renege on that concept?
Well.
So I'm not trying to beat up on Dr. Moffett, but I'm just curious.
No, 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 no. I answer it because at the end of the day, you know, let's say the buck stops here. It's not reneging on those trigger points. It was just getting to a point where we were not going back and forth as numbers change with those set points of 15 cases or 25 cases. It sends a lot of confusion to the community of what's open or what's closed, depending on what the number of the day is. So we've got to a point where we decided to have a point of consistency of where we are with how we are operating, and that's where we're going from there.
All right. So we will certainly take your concerns into account as we continue to collaborate with Spencer Hawkins and try to figure out what we can do administratively. This doesn't require action by the commission. But what we can do administratively to try to safeguard our employees, as well as the public, and do all that we can reasonably to continue to provide essential municipal services and business functions in the safest way that we can. So we'll do that, and we'll keep you closely apprised. Anything further before we move on?
Mayor, one last question for Spencer, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones.
Spencer, did I understand you to say we're averaging 35 new cases a day, but the projection was for 50 a day by end of the year? Or I lost you there.
You know, the confirmed cases that we have as of December 1st is 34.9. So I just said 35.
Right.
And then by December the 9th, so in about 10 or 11 days, about nine days, we're going to be at 49 cases.
That's the projection.
That's the projection. And I will say this, they've been projecting low the last couple of days.
Yeah. Well, we need, we need to remind people to not let your guard down and continue to do all the things that we recommend.
Exactly. Exactly. Any other comments before we move on? Good. We're all concerned about this, and we'll keep you closely posted of what we do administratively to try to safeguard employees and the public while we continue to try to provide services, as I said. Now, moving on, we've got three items on the consent agenda. The first one is an easy one. It's a change of ownership of an existing convenience store that has fuel sales and alcohol to go. It is the H2O Enterprises LLC doing business as the Busy Corner, located at 885 MLK Junior Boulevard. And as I say, it's a change of ownership of an existing convenience store with fuel sales, alcohol to go, and beer package sales to go. The second is a little more complex. It is a new alcohol beverage license for an existing bar and venue. That's the Rodeo Bar and Grill. There has been a quote-unquote "a change of ownership" in that the court has ordered us to do business with the applicant now. But it's an existing bar with beer, wine, liquor mix drinks, all consumed on the premises at that existing location with that existing license. Just a new applicant being the new individual, Ms. Hunt, that is the applicant in the case. I understand that some, some concern about that. But the final one is SR Groceries LLC, located, or to be located at 3173 Houston Avenue. It is a conversion of an existing building to become a convenience store. But as I understand it, without fuel sales, et cetera, it's just a convenience store. And they want to have packaged sales of beer at that location, beer to go at that location. And as I understand it, it meets the distance requirements under the Vice Mart statute. But other than that, it's accompanied by, as you might imagine, all of the requisite material from the alcohol beverage licensing to say that the appropriate fees have been paid, planning and zoning certification, and the distance requirements. But is there any concern about any of the three of those? Let me get Mayor Pro Tim, and then go to Commissioner Wynn.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I don't have an issue or problem with ownership, changing names, and changing over. Our licenses start on January 1 and goes through April. So I would just say we hold off on all of these. And because I don't see what's the purpose of approving any of these just for, you know, December, because they got to come back in January. So I don't have a problem with these folks doing change of ownership. But if we're talking about issuing beer and wine licenses, that just further gathers people together, and I just don't think we should do it. I think we can wait till the first of the year and look at these things again in the next administration and see how we want to proceed and move forward. Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion to table all three of these applications?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Wynn, is the second non-debatable motion. So all in favor of tabling these three applications signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no.
No.
I don't think either side had five votes to it. So I'm going to declare that the motion to table fails. And see now, do you want to vote on these individually, or do you want to vote on them collectively? How do you, how do you want to proceed at this point?
Mr. Mayor, let me, can I come back and ask a question?
Commissioner Wynn, go ahead.
The Houston Avenue location is, does anyone know where that is on Houston Avenue?
3173. I mean, maybe somebody can pull it up on a map right quick and tell me where it is.
But you say it's an existing store?
No, 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 no. I said it's an existing building that they're converting into a convenience store, as I understand it. Michael, do you have any additional information on this?
I got it.
No gas sales, no nothing like that?
That's my understanding now, but I'm going to lean on Michael.
So this is the location. The red mark, 3173 Houston Avenue. Yeah. Let's see. Zooming out just a little bit.
And it's far enough away from that church?
There's Evergreen Cemetery there. This is Pendleton Homes down here.
Right.
And.
Where's the next closest store? Maybe give me that. I'm bet just two more across the street or something like that.
So right across the street from Pendleton, we have, we have 3350 that y'all denied. That was Pearl 35. We had the whole hearing, and they got denied. The one next door at 3380 did not renew their license last year. They forgot to renew it. And so they don't have an alcohol license right now. So the closest store is, whoops. Let me close that. I'm sorry. It's, it's down here, the next block, Shiv Food Mart. And that's the closest store to SR Groceries. But, and Michelle Harris, I think, is on the call. She knows a little bit more about the Vice Mart analysis on this. But I believe what they went, engineering looked at these two stores, and I believe they found that the applicant store, SR Groceries, qualified as a food mart under the Vice Mart ordinance, that they sold fresh groceries and milk and meat and that kind of stuff. And so they qualified as a food mart and therefore didn't have the 2,500-foot distance requirement apply. Is that right, Michelle?
I'm not sure Michelle's on the call.
I thought she was here.
Tell me about how you did the Vice Mart analysis.
Michelle, if you can hear us, your mic is not working. It appears to be on, but we cannot hear you. Just letting you know for Attorney Harris.
So the Vice Mart analysis is if they're a Vice Mart or a discount store, like a dollar store, then they have, you can't be within 2,500 feet of another one. But because SR Groceries is a food mart, then that, that distance requirement doesn't apply. But because SR Groceries is a food mart, then that, that distance requirement doesn't apply to them.
How did they establish that they were a food mart? Just so I'm clear, who does that?
Um, I, I believe the engineering looked into it. I, I believe they were the ones that looked into that.
Is my mic working? Anybody hear me? Hey. Sorry, um, that is all correct. And we actually spent a pretty good deal of time going back and forth with engineering on this one just to make sure that we got it right because this was our first one that's come through as a, a self-identified Vice Mart. Um, if you notice in your packet, it actually includes engineers' specific measurements. We wanted to provide you with as much information as possible on this one. Again, because it was the first one that, that, that came through, um.
Wait, are you saying, I mi- I might have misunderstood you. Sound like you said they self-identified as a Vice Mart?
SR Grocery self-identifies as a Vice Mart.
Oh, well.
Okay, I got that backwards and I apologize.
So part of, part of the new packet for, for a license is a self-identification form. And on that form is where the entity will look at it. It provides like a, a definition breakdown of what each establishment, like what defines the establishment as what it is. Um, I've talked to the owner of this one several times just to make sure that they are in fact a Vice Mart. Um, they are, you know, very forthcoming in their information. They just sell kind of snacks. A lot of, I mean, they are typical Vice Mart. Um, I don't think there's any question of that. So um, we have talked to engineering several times, just again to make sure that the measurements were correct and that everything was complied with um for the surrounding stores. And again, because this was the first one, we all kind of spent a little extra time just making sure that, that it was done correctly. If you notice in your packet, engineering went so far as to include the actual um distance breakdown per establishment so that you can see all the measurements are there. Um, but it does comply.
All right, so and walk me through it. So I guess they're the first Vice Mart on the street and that means no one can be close to them?
Um, that's not necessarily the, the analysis. They're the first applicant that we've received that is a Vice Mart since the code went into effect, since the ordinance went into effect. So this is the first one that we've actually had engineering have to go out and um identify the surrounding stores and take measurements to make sure that there aren't any other Vice Mart's within um the, the restricted distance zone.
And I guess that's what we concluded, that there were no other Vice Marts within the zone?
Right, correct. And that goes back to what Mr. McNeil was talking about with one store has groceries and, and, and not being a, you know, not, not qualifying as a Vice Mart.
So this will create a twenty-five hundred foot bubble around this store then, where no other Vice Mart or discount store can open up and sell alcohol. Um, now that, you know, if there are any that are already existing there, they can renew. But uh, you know, there wouldn't be any change of ownerships or new, new licenses in that.
My J-cousin, I don't care, I think it was twenty, so the closest Vice Mart to this location was how far away?
Um, I, I actually do not have that information, um. Should be behind that, the engineer compliance form.
I guess I'm not, I got five documents on here and I hear you mentioning. I got planning zone compliant, I got a measurement form. It mentions three hundred feet from a library. Then question two is about previous issues for this location. And question three was grocery exempt because it's three hundred feet from a college. Then I've got the affidavit, the publication from the Telegraph.
Right, if you look at page two, which is behind the application for affidavit, this is from engineering, um. It goes into, uh, it, the heading of it is retail sales of beer and wine, package sale to go and consumption on premises for package sale to go. Um, that gives you the exact measurements.
The heading is what?
It is.
Right, right, retail sale, measurement form, it's page four. Yeah, I see, so completed by county engineer, that's what I was reading. It gives me the public library three hundred feet.
Right, so the, the one that we're talking about is, um, and this was dated from uh dated November twenty-fifth. There's the note that says that the next, uh, there, there were no Vice Mart's within twenty-five hundred feet of this location.
Um, I just don't see that in this form, in this set of form.
Michelle, if I can interrupt, we did not copy that one. So he does not have that, no, no ma'am, he doesn't have that in front of him.
Okay, it, it was submitted in what, what I turned in, so my apologies on that, um.
Anyway, you could.
Part of, of the tax commissioner's packet that came through, but it was something that we included here.
Anyway, you could share your screen and put it up?
Hey, Commissioner Jones trying to talk while y'all figured it out.
Commissioner Jones, uh, well, I, did, did I have Commissioner Win next? Commissioner Win, did you wish to be recognized at this point?
No, sir, I just, I have a concern with this being another Vice Mart on this area.
Uh, Commissioner Jones, let me go to you and then like I said, we're times of the essence, y'all. We got a lot left to do.
Yes, sir, I don't, I don't know about the individual stores. I do know Busy Corner has been there for, since the seventies. They, that location, so I, I don't believe we should be penalize small business owners, making them wait till the next administration. I think that's punitive to small business owners, people are trying to make a living. And they're, they're a legal licensed entity and all of these have passed the sheriff's due diligence and, and, and requirements. So I'm in favor of approving them all. I don't know about the, the one that other commissioners have concerns about or one commissioner has a concern about, but Busy Corner's been there since the seventies. So I certainly hope we would go ahead, maybe we need to separate them and.
I think we need to separate them because I don't have a problem with it.
Let's do, let's do, and I'll, I'll take Commissioner Jones uh as a motion uh to approve the license uh for the Busy Corner at eight eighty-five Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard for beer, beer package sales to go a- a- at that location. Again, it's a change of ownership of an existing convenience store with alcohol package to go and fuel sales currently. So is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Got a motion and second further discussion on the Busy, Busy Corner? Hearing none, all in favor of putting that on the agenda for final approval tonight, issuance of the license, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Got one, one no, Commissioner Bivens, uh, but the ayes have it and that'll be on the consent agenda for the, the regular meeting. Is there a motion now uh for either of the other two uh uh license applications? Ms. Lanita Hunt uh for the rodeo bar and grill um to uh have uh beer, wine and liquor mixed drinks uh of, of consumed on the premises uh at that existing location?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Michael?
I, I believe Michelle has up on the screen the updated um distance measurement form for SR Groceries.
Okay, Michelle, you, 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 you want to go ahead and walk through that right quick? Looks like I'm the engineering field surveyor and this is from Hornowski that may have done this, Paul Hornowski. Uh, can you scroll down, Michelle, and show us the rest of that form?
Michelle, do you want me to do it?
So, I'm trying, yeah. Okay. So the, the, the part that's in question is that very last box, the um Vice Mart small, small box retail store.
Michelle, we're unable to see the, the screen. I'm not sure if you're sharing just a particular window or the whole screen. All we're seeing is your email kind of zoomed in, your email inbox.
Okay, on my end, it's showing it.
If you want to forward it to me, I could bring it up or.
Okay. I actually just forwarded it to you, Michael, I don't know if you can open it?
If you stop your chair, I can do it.
Okay.
Well, while Michael's pulling, while Michael's pulling that one up in the essence of time, anybody want to make a motion one way or the other on Lanita Hunt and the rodeo bar and grill and, and?
Motion to table.
Got a motion to table that one, is there a second to that?
Uh, second.
Uh, got a second by Commissioner Lucas. So all in favor of ta- tabling uh the rodeo bar and grill, uh for further information, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
No. No.
I'm, I'm not sure you're going to get to five to table it, uh, so let's, let's have a, a roll call vote. If you want to table this, you'd vote yes. If you do not want to table it, you'd say no. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know why, I thought there was, I'm sorry.
On the motion to table, Commissioner Win, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote? Commissioner Bivens, did you unmute? I don't either. Um, Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
It's four to three.
Right, but you, e- even if, if Commissioner Bivens came on and, and voted yes, you'd still only have four, so the motion to table is not approved. Uh, so it's still on the table for further action. Let's go, let's go back and, and let Michael talk to us about the, the third, the third one, uh, which is the Houston Avenue SR Groceries. Uh, this is your distance measurement. Looks like, good gracious alive, Mercer Main Campus, sixteen thousand feet, River Edge, twelve thousand, Washington Memorial Library, Pendleton Homes, two thousand five, no, no Vice Mart within twenty-five hundred of thirty-one seventy-three Houston Avenue. Paul, Paul Hornowski, so that, that's, that, there's the answer to the.
That's it.
Right, to the, to the Vice Mart question. Commissioner Watkins, that, does that explain that satisfactorily?
Not really, I mean, that clarified. Well, I mean, um.
Did somebody make, somebody make a motion on this? We, we, we're going to spend the whole time.
Make a motion, we approve. I make a motion, we approve.
All right, so I know that thirty, I think at like thirty-six hundred Houston Avenue is some type of store that looks a lot like a Vice Mart. Either it's a grocery store and I have a grocery store on Houston Avenue or that's not twenty-five hundred feet away and twenty-five hundred feet is almost like a mile. Or what is it, half mile?
If, if y'all recall, the officer and the gentleman that early uh last year that had altercation went viral, that grocery store, Commissioner Watkins, is the one that you're speaking of, which is the grocery store there. So you're absolutely right.
So that, so that's. That's the actual grocery store, has fresh fruit, vegetables and the whole nine at it, okay? Okay, I'm, I'll move on.
Okay, so, so we, do we, we've got a, we've got a motion now by Jones uh to approve the, the SR Groceries. Uh, is that right, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
By Commissioner Allen, got a motion and second. So all in favor of issuing the license to SR Groceries, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Good gracious, I, I don't know, but I've got five ayes either, you know?
You don't.
No, I don't sound like I do.
You don't.
Uh, uh, so, well, that, that means the motion to pass didn't pass. So what do y'all want to do with these? Want, want to just table the, these last two?
Table them, we need to table, should have tabled all of them.
I got a motion to table the last two from Commissioner Lucas, is there a second to that?
Okay.
By Allen, okay, so if you're in favor of, of tabling the last two uh and for more information, then signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If you're against that, say no?
No.
No.
I think the ayes, I think the ayes have it, I think we got seven on the line, like you got five to two. Uh, so Jones and Win say no, but I think you got five ayes to the table. So we'll table these two for more information uh for Lanita Hunt and, and the rodeo bar and grill and the SR Groceries, but we'll move on and have one item on the con- the consent agenda, that's Busy Corner. Um, moving on quickly now, um, I need to go into executive session. Uh, but before I do that, because, well, uh, no, just let me go into executive session to confer with counsel. Uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Aye, go for it.
Okay, got a motion and second, uh, and we'll go into executive session with the, uh, mayor elect and the commissioners elect invited in to, to listen to the conversation. Everybody else has to be put in the waiting room. Rachel, can you help us with that?
Yes, sir, I'm going to stop our live stream now. For anyone watching, we will resume this live stream both on Facebook and our website after the executive session has ended. So I'm stopping that now.